Take four A out of order, or just, we can just skip to it. We know we don't vote on item three anyway, just a notification. So we can come back to item three.
Yeah.
So first order of business is to review, discuss, and act on Hunter's Hill subdivision, map twenty-one. Lots eight, nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-four, sixty-eight, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-eight, seventy-nine. Because I started reading, I have to finish now. Eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, one-twenty-one, and one-thirty. And map twenty-two, lots six, text zero-two, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, and ninety. And to approve standard performance covenant and release a performance bond. And review proposed off-site sale sign. Off-site for sale sign, sale sign. Okay. All right, so, did you want to speak to this, or we can just run through this packet here?
Sure.
Okay.
Just briefly, Lee Castignetti, representing the applicant Long Built Homes and the new owner, L B H Hunter's Hill LLC. We, we've just, well, first of all, I'm extremely pleased to be able to announce that we have begun construction out there. We had a very fruitful and meaningful pre-construction meeting with Jim Aguirre, Lisa Caledonian, Tom Ferry. And construction began a few, a couple of weeks ago. And unfortunately, the weather conditions aren't as cooperative as we'd like them to be, but we're working through that. And things are progressing on both the construction of Clubhouse Drive and the sewer treatment facility. So, the previous owner, Tony Almeida, has a bond posted with the town for construction of the, the cost to construct the roads to assure completion of the construction. And we, so obviously, he would like to have that terminated. So we're seeking to do this. We won't be ready to post our security with the town until we get the binder course down. And we'll do it for the, for the balance of the value after the binder course is down, which will hopefully be sometime in April or May. But just as an accommodation to him, we'd like to set up this covenant as our interim form of security. Because we can't get building permits or sell anything until we, you know, get the lots released. So, so he can get his, his bond released.
Thank you.
And it's been, we've gone back and forth with town council. And the form that we're proposing to have you sign has been approved by town council.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. So, there's a number of additional correspondence, which is what Mr. Castignetti is referring to, up until four forty-one this afternoon.
Went a little later as well, I think.
Was there additional? I wasn't on the additional ones. So the last one I got was the four forty-one, and I think the intent was, there were some additional comments that the town council placed or requested. And I think the last one was modification of a section three, additional text, and...
We're willing to forego that. I've talked to Carrie about that. We'll leave it in the form that it's in.
Okay, got it.
I'm confident that our, our relationship and our, our dealings with the planning board will put any of my concerns to rest, so.
Okay. Council said, let's keep it on for tonight. This is your response. And they can approve it subject to me agreeing to the terms with the council. So, we can roll all this up, and it can be a conditional approval, as you stated here.
It actually doesn't have to be.
Doesn't that have to be?
No, the form that Carrie has is, that's been approved by town council is fine.
Oh, okay, so none of the additional items are applicable longer?
What's that?
None of the additional items are applicable any longer?
No.
Oh.
Nope.
That's the one that I missed.
Yeah.
Okay. So, gentlemen of the board, as presented in your heart copies, you have the modified covenant, as Mrs. Castignetti stated. And, does anyone have any questions for the applicant, or anything otherwise?
I actually have one. You're saying that the bond will, we're gonna give the bond back to the previous owner. And yours is gonna take over once the, the binder goes down?
No, it'll, it'll be, that, that's your security. It's standard, you know, on approval of a subdivision is a performance covenant that prohibits me from being able to sell any lots. So that's, you know, that's your security. You basically control the lots, the value of the lots. And then, but once we do get the binder down, we'll post it for, so we can get release of those lots and be able to get building permits and sell them.
Just, kind of.
Notification.
Never know, never know.
There's also terms of execution and all this. It's all laid out here. That's, that's all the additional texts that Attorney Talerman put in here. All the blue text, the little colored copies.
Everything is covered.
Yep. Okay, I have no concerns. It's not like anybody in the board has any concerns either. It's pretty cut and dry, and...
Yeah, pretty, pretty standard procedure.
Pretty standard with the additional, yeah. So, thank you for being so willing and forthcoming with all this. And so, hearing nothing further from the board, can somebody please make a motion to approve the standard performance covenant and release of the performance bond?
So move.
Any discussion before we take a two vote? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Hearing none? Motion carries. Thank you.
Did you want to discuss the, that off-site?
The sign as well.
Coming soon sign?
Oh, yeah, and a review of the proposed off-site sale sign. Yep, let's do that, please. So, there was a picture, and there were, there's some back and forth between you and Mr. Aguirre.
Yes.
Have here. The latest I have is on email, so let me just go to the email.
What pages that on?
It's like the last three pages?
What's being proposed is a sign on...
Last four pages of that. That's the covenant that you just...
That's the covenant, got it. All right, so, it says here, from Mr. Aguirre, "Morning, Mrs. Easterday. Please allow this email to serve as official correspondence regarding the Hunter's Hill subdivision. I'm asking that the board acknowledge at its meeting tonight the submittal and eventual issuance of a building permit for a sign to promote the Hunter Hill subdivisions. Below are the questions I asked of the applicant, Long Built Homes, and answers from Lee Castignetti." Sorry, apologize. Have been highlighted. I've also attached a sign for plan for reference. And the sign plan you have there, I don't know if the packet has this exchange, but said, "Hi, Lee. Please weigh in on the questions and comments below. The sign will be installed on which property, exact address, please." This is where you've talked to a local person there. It's to be installed on the front left corner of thirty-two twenty-seven Sharp Slot Road, where it intersects with Anderson Drive. And next question was, "Will Long Built Homes have a lease agreement with the property owner for which the sign will be located?" And person's name here, "At that address, has given us verbal permission to install a sign on her property. And there was no intention of entering into a lease agreement. However, if that is the town's preference, we can certainly do so." I don't think that's typically done, talking about leasing a space, an area.
That's, yeah, what it would be.
It sounds like that's not necessary, and she doesn't think it's necessary either. The duration will be concurrent with construction, next question. Will the duration be concurrent with the construction until the project is complete? And your answer was, "That's correct. Although one project is fully underway, the sign will change from a coming soon sign to a more directional informational sign. The dimensions of the sign will not change." Next question, the sign, will the sign be maintained properly? Response was, "The sign will be meticulously maintained throughout the entire duration of its existence." Final question is, "Will the sign be illuminated?" And your response was, "There will be no illumination." So that's the details of the sign, and in your packet, you should have a drawing of what the sign's gonna look like. Dimensions should be mentioned as well. Preserve, that's where it says coming soon, and then eventually, you said it's gonna change it with additional, additional information. It's a six-foot wide sign by four-foot high, sitting approximately two feet off grade. By eight-inch, especially treated wood. Install four feet below grade. Okay, there's a silhouette of a human for reference. Yeah, gentlemen of the board, do you have any concerns on this? I don't think this is something we need to vote on, is it?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, just, building commissioner just wanted to make sure it was on record that the planning board was aware. Especially with it being on, not the property of, of the development on and end of the town's property.
Yeah, we, I don't, we don't, I don't think there's any concerns here from anybody in the board.
None whatsoever.
We are, we stand aware. We stand aware as well. Okay.
Right.
So we just have to sign this? Thank you.
Yep.
So was there something, the review of the standard homeowners association agreement procedure, that's not?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, that's something else, yeah.
Yeah, speaking of, I just...
I did the same thing, because I thought it said, oh, he's...
Sorry, there's a subsection two, I thought, maybe that's... And just, for your information regarding the homeowners association, we've done the transition. And the transition has gone extremely well.
Okay.
So homeowners have embraced the change and...
So, just as a question, when you started this whole process, how did you let the homeowners know that there was a homeowners association?
Oh, they're aware, they've, they've been paying into, they've been paying their monthly dues to Tony for the last eight years that he's owned it. And they, and they were paying pre, you know, prior to that when the Mirandas owned it. So it's been an ongoing type of thing that...
They've been aware from day one since then.
Have they?
Yeah.
Okay. Was it, was it in their covenants, or?
Yeah, it's, it's on record, and so when they closed on it, they would have been made aware that it was, was there.
Everything, somewhat detailed, okay. That's actually, that's our next subject. Unrelated to your development, obviously, but, okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, we, as a matter of practice, we always attach the homeowner's trust, or whatever, it's usually, usually a trust, ninety-nine times out of a hundred. We, we attach it as, to every P and S agreement as an exhibit.
Okay.
So that we make clear, and we go over with, with the buyers to make clear that they're aware of the, of the, of the fact that there's a homeowners association and what the financial arrangement surrounding it will be, so.
Okay, thank you for doing that.
Sure. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Good night.
Okay, so we can skip down to the next item of business, four, four A two, review standard homeowners association agreement procedure. So, can't, we can't review a procedure because there is none. Right? So, we would like there to be a, I guess, I don't know, if it should be in the conditions. I guess, you know, you know the motivation for this statement. And there's an email in here that I, after the last, after the meeting where, we were talking about my development. It seemed, the selectmen hall came up and, and said that it sounded like it was a reoccurring theme. Homeowners were coming up, HOAs weren't being set up correctly, they were finding out after the fact. And it's not, it's not a rare situation, it happens often. Doesn't seem to happen at Long Built Homes, you had it all set up upfront, I'm glad to hear that. But it, it isn't always the case where a development gets set up and this is something that's on their list. So I don't know where it makes sense to, to do that, to, to make it as part of a checklist, to make it part of a standard operating procedure, to make it part of our normal conditions of approval document. Because I know we've gone along, we've added things to that boilerplate. And I don't know what should trigger this, should it be a bylaw? I don't really know.
Can I ask, at what point does a particular HOA get established as a legal entity? Is it, the developer does it prior to its very first sale? I mean, what causes that to be created, that master deed that says this HOA legally exists?
Well, I, I can only tell you from my experience, if the HOA legally existed and was in the name of Loeb's Company. And prior to that, it was in the name of the Rodericks family collective, whatever the name of their company was. So I think our issue had more to do with the fact that it changed hands and wasn't fully finished when it changed hands to the Loeb's Company. So, that situation is probably not representative of all situations. But it seems like at any one point in time, there is no standard for when it come. I don't, I don't think it shows up anywhere, does it?
It does.
It does.
So I was just letting you know.
It should.
I was letting you know.
It should.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, what happens is, in a subdivision, definitive subdivision, or even a conservation subdivision, within our conditions, we always establish, it's always a directive for the developer to establish the HOA. And it has to be recorded at the registry of deeds. And then what happens is, is like what Mr. Castignetti was saying, it's, say they forgot to tell the new homeowner that there's, there's deed restrictions on there, or, I mean, the HOA. If they go to do a title search, or whatnot, that's when it would pop up, it's when it would show up. So, we already have the mechanism already, because in our decisions, we always say, especially when you, because of the stormwater basins and stuff, it's, that's one of the conditions that's always put into the decisions for subdivisions. So I spoke to Jim today, advising him what we were discussing today. And just to bring it back a little bit, one of the issues that the town, my understanding is, the town can't manage the HOA, put it that way. Because from a town's perspective, the HOA and the residents, that's a civil matter, the two of them have to work it out. The town is just the one who, or the developer, I'm sorry. The developer and the homeowners work it out, and they converse together on the HOA. The town is the one who requires that they have the HOA, but after that, the developer maintains it and goes with it. And he's the one that's supposed to advise, you know, if a new homeowner comes in, hey, there's this HOA that's gonna be part of it. And then again, if he doesn't do it, or they don't do it, then it's caught when they do a title search, and that type of thing. And I had, I explained to Jim what the problem was, the issue. And we were hearing a lot from people that they had no idea after they signed their documents. In the documents, that they're purchase and sale documents, there is an acknowledgement typically with their attorney saying, yes, I acknowledge there is an HOA. But as you probably know, when you sign purchase and sale agreements on the purchase of a house, you know, you have like five hundred documents. And I think it's just getting lost in translation. Jim had mentioned that maybe what we could do is come up with some standard letter where it would say, you know, "Welcome to Dyton, you're a new homeowner. Just please be advised that you're moving into a subdivision that has an HOA that will incur, you know, that, that requires," and it's always like the exhibit that explains what they're supposed to do, and you can attach that to it. Leave a couple places blank, so you would have like the name of the developer, and then a spot to fill in for that individual person. So that when Jim goes to release his certificate of occupancy, he can give them that form at that time and say, "Hey, just so you know, there's an HOA," and they're well aware of it. And that would, and then you also give the contact information, because the developer still is the trustee of the HOA, so he still drives it. So if the homeowner has any questions or concerns, those questions and concerns would be going to the developer, not the town. So that's one thing he suggested, with something like that.
It'd be something like in the...
I, I think there is a little glitch there.
Okay.
The HOAs don't normally apply to all subdivisions. They only apply to conservation, forty Bs, but a standard subdivision, like in my subdivision, we don't have HOAs.
So yours doesn't, because yours is, was built many years ago.
Mine is none of the above.
Today's, today's subdivisions, all of them.
Not, doesn't fall into the, really?
No, all of them have to have HOAs now.
They all have to have HOAs.
Because the town doesn't wanna be the responsible maintenance...
Yeah, the town doesn't have the manpower to be able to maintain, but the main reason is, is for retention and detention ponds. And so, the town does not have the manpower to be able to maintain those, which is why we do the HOAs. Because that's on the responsibility of the development. So, I wanna say, I don't know how long ago, but with every subdivision that I've looked at, the most recent, probably past maybe ten years, HOAs have been in existence.
It was twenty-eleven.
So, yeah.
Twenty?
Twenty-eleven.
Yeah, so it is part of, it's part of a standard thing.
That should be, that should be the attorney's responsibility to let every transaction...
Which attorney are we referring to?
The attorney that's...
That's representing the buyer.
Representing the buyer.
Correct.
That should be their responsibility.
It is their responsibility, which is a reason why the town can't step in and come up with a directive or a requirement, because that's between the developer and, you know, the potential new homeowner, or the homeowner.
I mean, in, in the case like Jeff and his neighbors there, I would fight that tooth and nail. I mean, I don't know how much it is that they gotta pay for that, but personally, I, I wouldn't pay. Because they were not notified that there was an HOA, you know, it's...
Yeah.
The attorney has insurance for that.
Correct.
Well, the real estate agent knows that, too.
Correct.
Right, and they should be disclosing, full disclosure.
Yeah.
I, I don't know that they, you know, if, if the developer don't tell them, they don't care.
Right, and the other thing, you know, you mentioned a letter. Right, I, I think a letter should be drafted to handle more things than just HOA. Like, there's a lot of issues with conservation that we hear about. You know, like a homeowner, let's say, the average Joe buys a home in Dyton.
You have to use Joe, right? You couldn't use Woody.
No, 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 let's just say you buy a house, right? You think, "I bought this house, and I have acre and a half of land, and I have a chainsaw. Okay, and I'm gonna cut these trees down." How many times have we heard that?
Yeah.
Right, and now they're cutting down trees in a wetland or in a buffer zone. But the average person who buys a home, they think those trees are theirs, they can do what they want. Right, and, and you would think you could, but in today's day and age, everything has a restriction.
Yeah.
But only if you know about it, so.
It still, it still has a restriction.
I said before, we need to have a joint meeting with a couple of other boards.
Yeah.
And, and come up with something, because it's a crying shame when, like, I ain't gonna say any cases that's happened recently, but I, I know of a lot of them.
Yes.
And it's terrible for the homeowner who cut these trees down because they wanted to put in a pool, or they wanted to build a garage, or, or they just didn't like the tree. And now they're in trouble. And now they gotta do a wetland restoration, and they gotta hire lawyers.
In most cases, what they do is they get a slap in the face, on the hands, and...
I don't think so.
And it's done.
No.
Not now.
You could do that twenty years ago.
Oh, I wouldn't do anything like that.
So, I, I like the idea of a form, you saying something that would go in the rules and regs?
We could.
Okay.
We could put something in there, or it could just be something as part of, you know, a standard operating procedure.
So where is this now? I don't, I don't see any reference to this anywhere.
You know, the town sends out that thing every year, every...
Stormwater management, nothing here.
No. When you, when the board approves a subdivision, that's part of the discussion. So when you, if you have a new applicant coming in, and...
It's in the conditions.
It, yes, it's in the conditions. So that, that's one of the...
In the decision, conditions of the decision.
Correct.
I've never seen that before.
Yeah, no?
No.
Well, we haven't had really a...
We haven't had one.
We haven't had one.
What if we put it in as a condition that we need to have an HOA form, or a standard, whatever, you know, from the developer as to what they're gonna have?
What their plan is.
Huh?
I mean, right now, there's, they have a maintenance plan you need to provide. That's HOA. That, that's all HOA language.
Yeah.
Some people don't even know what HOA stands for.
They don't.
Mm-hmm.
If you tell them, Jeff.
Port of Africa. Never sail there. Home Owners Association. Never sail at the other HOA.
But again, all of this would be after they've built the property.
It's late.
We will now advise you of...
Oh, by the way.
And then you're signed.
Yeah, here's, here's what you sign. Don't know what your budget was, but here's another two and a half bucks a month you gotta come up with.
I, I mean, I'm a buddy, I, I would, I would be shocked to think that the realtor wouldn't relay that information.
I, I can tell you, from my personal experience, we didn't have a developer. We bought a piece of land from a failed development.
That's a, yeah, you're in an extremely unique circumstance.
I'm, I'm, it's so unique, it's repeated twenty-six times, my neighbor. So unique.
Well, no, but the situation of failed development, that person started an HOA, may not have been...
When was the last time you saw a development that wasn't like, sitting vacant for a while, nothing happening? It was, it was like a decade. But I know, it, it does this, I get it. But, okay, but it, it, but, you know, the, 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 the family we bought the land from, they didn't tell us, they just wanted to sign over the land, sell us the land, and then we, we got our own, we got our own house builder, independent of that. So there was no one-stop shop then, like, like Long Built, like all those other places, because it wasn't like that at all. So, I, I guess it's a unique situation, but like I said, it was repeated twenty-six times. Not that unique in, in my, in my part of town, but I guess everybody's a different situation. What I don't know is where, yeah, I mean, I guess that, that could work. I didn't know it was a condition that we typically put in the, in the decision. I'll be honest, I've never seen that. Ever since I've served here, we haven't had one.
Yeah.
I know that back when the planning board used to meet in your office... I know that back when the planning board used to meet in your office, you weren't working in there yet. And I, I remember that the, our developer to, to Lopes Company, had, had a lawyer present, and she said, but this is all on the deed, it should be obvious. I know it's not the deed, maybe it's to the deed, I don't know, I've never seen it. So it, it's not, it's not obvious to the homeowner, so.
Right.
I don't know where it makes sense, but I, I.
Yeah, it's definitely something that we need more information, I guess, or research and.
I like the idea of the letter, the standard form that they get, and that's at least an additional notification.
Right.
But the information's really gotta be folded by the developer, right? Cause it's a lot of missing information.
Yeah.
I mean, looking at forty-three sixty, I opened it up, it says, "Certificate of occupancy shall not be issued for any dwelling unit in a subdivision until a stormwater management system is fully operational and a homeowners association is."
Yep, right there.
homeowners association is properly defined and, and communicated and recorded.
Yeah.
You can add words to that sentence, you're like, oh, whoa, this is serious.
There it is, yeah.
Right there.
That's perfect.
Section is that again?
Perfect.
Forty-three sixty.
Thank you.
I mean, no, no CO until that's done, right? I mean, some, something, something you can sink your teeth into.
Right.
I mean, then it's, then it's not just some form where I lost it.
Yeah.
Oh, I can't give you CO, I can't, why can't you give me certificate of occupancy? You don't have an HOA.
Right. Yeah.
That'd get some attention.
One of, one of the other procedures that we have, that I've noticed in the past, so I haven't taken a subdivision from the application to the very end, or to the signing and the approval, except for really small ones, but, I forgot where I was going with that now, sorry. Oh, one of the, one of the things that is required, that I've looked at all the past decisions, is one of the things that are required is before they can even get a building permit, that HOA has to be recorded.
So it's even earlier? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and also, they can't get a lot until they go through us.
Correct.
That'll be there, so.
Correct.
The HOA has to be.
Yeah, that has to be established before they even get a building permit to start building.
Until, until the development gets turned over, like the, the road gets accepted, the HOA is in the developer's name. Like I, even our, we have an HOA.
Right.
But it's, it's not our name.
Correct.
We don't have, we don't have officers, it's not, we're not the trustees, I, you know, I call myself the interim president, cause I'm not really.
Cause it's still the developer.
It's still, it's still one hundred percent of the developer, so they have to update all that. So, this doesn't mean you need to set things up with residents, this is just, you need to have something recorded and, and, so, so you think, so you think a building permit? I was thinking certificate of occupancy, but you, you said when?
Right, on the four, uh, four six, fourteen sixty or whatever you said.
Four sixty, yeah.
Right, just put that, it's a condition, condition of approval.
Okay.
No good?
Yeah.
Well, I can, I'll get into it.
She's saying building permit.
Yeah, but that's, that's not the building.
This is later. This is not, this is.
No, that's prior.
The certificate of occupancy?
Oh, that's on the certificate, that's what that is?
Yeah, this is late, this is much later.
I thought it was on the process of approval.
So if we incorporate that form, you would have two steps there. You would have, one, the recording of the HOA before they get the building permit, before they can even start any work over there. Then, once they start building homes, and Jim goes out to give the certificate of occupancy, we would have that standard form to the potential new homeowner, saying, there's an HOA, just to make sure you're aware, and if there's any issues, you need to contact the developer.
So you're saying have it, like, come up both in, both times?
Yeah, have the double assurance.
I don't think it's a bad idea.
Yeah.
Cause I think, I think bringing it up at the building permit phase, like making sure they have that before they get their building permit is ten times better, because once construction starts to get it.
Forget it, you'll never see it, which is why that's part of the condition that they have done for years, was that they had.
They don't need to set up a payment plan, they don't need to do anything.
Yeah.
It's just, you need to have the skeleton and it needs to be recorded.
Correct.
And it needs to be on the deeds.
Yep.
Because people need to know it.
Right. That's one thing I wanted to look into was the, being on the deeds part, I mean, it.
We can't enforce it.
Play the deeds, we say that.
But we, we, actually, it's not true, we can't. No. The land deed, I mean, I know, I don't, I don't think.
I don't think so.
No, there's no one can enforce that.
No, because we don't see the transaction when they transfer the property owner.
Right, but if you, but if you ask them to provide proof, then that, you can, you can enforce the requirement to provide proof.
Right.
I mean, the town has the ability to put up that deed, because in the example where the HOA is not paying its bills, the town included the lead, the HOA, and then each deed does get recorded that there is a lead on it. Right, I mean, that's a different situation, but.
Yeah.
It's just an example where the town does have the ability to put language on that deed.
Correct.
So I wonder if there's a law that's saying that, or there's some way that the, the town actually could, you know, insert language in the deed upfront, to the extent that there's such an.
That there is.
Not that it's a default, but that it exists at all.
I can talk to Jay, our counsel too, and see what he suggests.
Cause at a minimum, just make a, a condition that they have to provide proof.
Yeah.
Ideally, it's like, actually, reaching out and touching the deed and putting a, a specific one liner.
Yeah.
That says it's required, because that's, that's all it takes, it's a one liner.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, you wanna, you wanna, if you can be part of a subdivision.
You're gonna be tied into this too.
This needs to be tied in and it needs to be notified upfront, okay.
So.
All right.
I'll be doing some more research.
Word file. Okay, no, thank you.
Would a forty B be enough to have an eight-point deal?
And it's really what it comes down to, it's, it's still more.
Except for stormwater.
The size of the back of me, I'm a little bit, so what do I say? If it wasn't for that, the only thing you have is water catch basins and stormwater manholes, stormwater management, inspection, cleanings, maintenance, that kind of thing, it's, that, that's a hundred percent one of those.
Yeah.
Yep, that doesn't go away. All right, awesome, thank you. Anything else, gentlemen? Carrie?
I don't have anything else, no.
Okay, all right, so circling back to the next meeting date on March twentieth, at this point, we still don't have anything for the agenda, right? It's reasonable to resolve the Hunter Hill thing.
We resolved mine, so.
And if there were any public hearings or anything, like as you mentioned, that they don't meet the criteria for the notice. So at this point, we're looking at to cancel the next meeting, and next meeting will be.
April third?
April third. April third, twenty twenty-four. Okay. Next item on the agenda was the approval of meeting minutes, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Motion, please.
I'll, I'll second.
All right, motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, uh, thank you, five ayes. Carrie, do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Any public input?
We do not.
All right, have another. I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Goodnight, Dyton.